The following is a production of Keri TV, the Town of Keri's government access channel.
I will be hitting you up as soon as this meeting is over.
Good evening. I'll call this meeting to order. As you can probably tell, Mayor Weinberg is not with us this evening. Out of abundance of caution, he is going to be calling in remotely tonight as he was exposed to somebody with COVID. So, wants to make sure he keeps all of us safe and himself safe and all that. So, is Harold on the line already? Or, okay, everybody say, "Hey, Harold."
Hey, Harold.
Yeah.
Awesome. I didn't hear him.
He should be there.
All right, just making sure. Cool. Awesome. Well, at this point, I will recognize Council Member Cohen Johnson for our ceremonial opening.
Yes, thanks, everybody, for being here and for your time this evening. Please join us and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We move to the portion of the meeting where we adopt the agenda. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And I believe there are no recognition reports or presentations. Okay. Well, Mayor Weinberg is not with us this evening. Out of abundance of caution, he is going to be calling in remotely tonight as he was exposed to somebody with COVID.
We're getting a replay.
That's what you sound like.
Harold, turn off your TV.
Or mute.
That was weird.
Are you like, "Who is that guy?"
I was like, "Why is Harold saying the same stuff I did say?"
It's gonna be a long day anyway.
All right. Now, we move to the Public Speaks Out portion of our agenda. We've included instructions for the speaking at this forum on the online and printed agenda. There were three opportunities to participate in Public Speaks Out through written comments, call-in, or attending in person. If you are here in person and would like to speak, please take a seat in the rows to my right with the blinding light, so that we know that there are people here wanting to speak. Public Speaks Out speakers have up to three minutes each for their comments, and speakers may speak on any town-related topic as long as it is not a public hearing. The three-minute time limit will be enforced, and not to be rude, but to be fair to all speakers. There is a timer at the podium to help you adhere to that three-minute time limit. And when you have 30 seconds left, the little green light will turn yellow, and when your time is up, that yellow light starts flashing red. So, I thank everyone in the audience for respecting that this is a business meeting, and please do not applaud, make remarks from your seat, or anything else that might distract from the meeting. And I will now open Public Speaks Out and call on the clerk to read any written comments, or call on any registered speakers.
No written comments and no registered speakers.
Okay. And at this point, we'll now open the floor to anyone who's here attending and would like to speak. Seeing no one, we will close Public Speaks Out, and we will now move to the Consent Agenda portion. For the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, I will take a moment to review the consent agenda items, and please remember that one vote approves all these items. Council-recommended advisory volunteer appointments, Town Code Compliance with Session Law 2021-138, 22REZ07, Green Level Industrial Rezoning, and 22AO5 Green McManus Annexation. Would any council member like to pull any item from consent? Seeing no one, I will call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. All right, we're now at the public hearing portion of our meeting. Same rules apply for Public Speaks Out, except that speakers now have five minutes for their comments instead of three. And let's see. And our first public hearing is for 22A16 Carpenter Fire Station Road Annexation. This hearing was opened at the September 8th council meeting and continued to this meeting to allow the owner to submit the correct paperwork. Planning Manager Katie Dry will give a short summary as a reminder, and council may take action on this item. Ms. Dry.
Good evening. As you noted, the public hearing was opened on this case on September 8th and continued until tonight. As a brief reminder, the site is a request for annexation of 14.6 acres of Carpenter Fire Station Road and Highway 55. The associated development plan for this site is in review, and the site must be annexed before the development plan may be approved. There were no public hearing speakers or comments submitted at the September 8th portion of the public hearing. And following the conclusion of the public hearing tonight, I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dry. All right. Open the public hearing and call on the clerk to read any written comments and call on any registered speakers.
No written comments and no registered speakers.
Gotcha. All right. With that, I will close the public hearing. And does council members have any questions or comments?
Mayor Protem, we need to open the public hearing to anyone who might be in attendance.
Shoot, I didn't do that. I won't even tell I'm new at this, right? All right. Backing it up, I will now open the public hearing and call on any people that are in attendance who might like to speak on the public hearing. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And I already know that my colleagues do not have any comments or questions, so at this point, I will ask for a motion for the annexation.
So moved.
Second.
That's to approve, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Our second public hearing is for Item 22AO6 33528 Optimus Farm Road. The senior housing planner Heather Wheelahan will introduce the hearing. Council will not take action on this item tonight, but it will return at a future meeting. Ms. Wheelahan.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is an annexation public hearing with deferred action. It is a request for an annexation of an eight-acre property located a quarter-mile from Middle Creek High School, just east of the Westlake Road-Optimus Farm Road intersection. The annexation also includes an additional .76 acres of intervening right-of-way on Optimus Farm Road. The area is contiguous to Keri's corporate limits, but outside of the ETJ. The associated rezoning case proposes an initial carry zoning of R8CU, residential eight conditional use, with conditions to facilitate up to 20 detached dwellings. The public hearing for the rezoning was held on July 28th, and there were no comments or questions from citizens on this case. Approval of the annexation is required before staff may approve any building permit for the site. And following the public hearing, action will be deferred to future council meeting to allow final vote on the annexation to coincide with final action on the associated rezoning. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Wheelahan. All right. At this point, I will open the public hearing and call on the clerk to read any written comments and call on any registered speakers.
No written comments and no registered speakers.
Okey-dokey. All right. I will ask and invite anybody that might be here in attendance who might like to speak on the public hearing to approach the podium. Seeing no one, I will close this public hearing, and this item will return to us at a future date for action. Thank you, Ms. Wheelahan. All right. Our third public hearing is 22REZ12 Brookstone Community Association Rezoning and 22A12 Brookstone Community Association Annexation. Senior Planner Erin Puckett will introduce both the items. Council will not take action on the annexation or the rezoning tonight. The rezoning will be referred to our planning and zoning board, and the items will return to council at a future meeting for action. Ms. Puckett.
Thank you, and good evening, council. This is a request to annex and apply initial carry zoning to approximately 1.04 acres located along the north and south side of Louis Drive, east of its intersection with NC55 Highway. The public hearing this evening will be for both the rezoning and annexation. Regarding the associated annexation, the site is contiguous to Keri's primary corporate limits. In this case, the annexation is needed in order to bring the intervening right-of-way into town limits, thus making it eligible for carry maintenance at a future date. As a reminder, no action is needed on the annexation tonight. It will return to you at a future date to align with final decision on the rezoning. The site consists of one unaddressed parcel, which runs along both the north and south side of Louis Drive adjacent to its intersection with NC55. The parcel was purchased by the developer of Brookstone, the subdivision to the east of this site, in the 1990s to provide required access to NC55, but it was not annexed into Keri at that time. The landscape strips were later turned over to the Brookstone Community Association. During consideration of previous rezoning cases in the area, including the 20REZ08 rezoning, which was approved in November 2021 for a mixed residential neighborhood, residents of Brookstone expressed concerns about the maintenance of this westernmost segment of Louis Drive, which is currently maintained by NCDOT. In order for Keri to take over maintenance of this street segment, it would first need to be annexed into town limits, and Keri is unable to annex right-of-way except as intervening area when property on either side is brought into Keri's limits. If annexed, the segment would be eligible for a future street swap with NCDOT. According to Keri's GIS, there are no stream buffers impacting the property. Louis Drive is designated as a collector's street on Keri's transportation plan with a future two-lane cross-section with sidewalk on both sides. The Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Master Plan does not propose any parks or greenways in the immediate vicinity. The site is currently in Wake County and is zoned Highway District, or HD, and the applicant proposes a carry zoning of Resource Recreation, or RR. As the request is for a general-use zoning district, there are no zoning conditions associated with this request. A preliminary analysis of the request against the Imagine Keri Community Plan finds the policies in the Shape, Serve, and Move chapters apply most directly. A zoning of Resource Recreation, along with the shallow depth and small area of this site, would limit the use of the property. It is unlikely the property could be developed for anything other than its current use as landscaped open space. This would help to maintain transitions to properties to the north and south, as well as maintain the attractive appearance along this portion of Louis Drive. Preserving these landscape strips in RR zoning could also address serve policies related to the preservation of open space and tree canopy. As mentioned earlier, the rezoning and annexation of the property into Keri's limits would make the adjoining right-of-way eligible for a future street swap with NCDOT, which could help provide consistency and maintenance of the whole of Louis Drive, thus tangentially addressing the move policy to ensure a well-maintained system. This segment of Louis Drive is one of a list of several streets under consideration for a potential swap with NCDOT that would come before council at a future date, likely next year. The site is designated Traditional Neighborhood on the Future Growth Framework map. This designation supports the provision of common open space associated with residential subdivisions. A virtual neighborhood meeting was held in August. No citizens participated in the meeting, and staff has not received any calls or emails since that meeting. Staff mailed public hearing notification to property owners within 800 feet of the subject site. This exceeds the state's requirement to notify abutting properties and Keri's LDO requirement to notify properties within 100 feet of the site. This concludes my presentation. The applicant's representative, Randy Herman, is here tonight to provide the applicant's comments, and following the public hearing, I'm available for your questions.
Thank you. We'll invite the applicant's representative forward.
Thank you, Randy Herman, from the law firm of BA Folke, here representing Brookstone Community Association. So, as Erin said, the primary impetus for this annexation and rezoning is really to bring Louis Drive into the Town of Keri's jurisdiction. As she said when we were dealing with the rezoning of the adjacent property last year, one of the main concerns that members of the Brookstone Association had was Louis Drive being used as a cut-through, and speeding and traffic issues of various sorts on Louis Drive. And part of the concern was that the Town of Keri wasn't able to, is limited in what it can do about those issues, because the portion of Louis Drive that's actually inside Brookstone is a Town of Keri street, but this portion right at the end by 55 is currently DOT street, and so there's limited authority that the town has over the street and what they can do in terms of managing traffic and things like that. So, we've proposed this annexation in order to allow for the future, in the future, for that portion of Louis Drive to be brought into the town's maintenance, so that the entire length of Louis Drive would be under control of the town, and hopefully that'll give the town the ability to manage some of those traffic issues that we've seen. Happy to answer any questions, but hopefully this is a straightforward one.
Sounds good. Standby, we might have some. All right. At this point, I will open the public hearing and call on the clerk to read any written comments and/or call on any registered speakers.
No written comments and no registered speakers.
This is a pattern.
Yes.
All right. At this point, I will open the floor to anybody here that might want to speak on the request. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And do you have any questions or comments?
No.
Anybody?
No, but have we ever seen anything like this before? I don't remember seeing one.
I have not personally. I think this is a bit of an unusual situation. We have had annexation, or excuse me, rezonings to, you know, R40 and less impactful districts associated with an initial annexation, but that's usually for utilities. So, this is a completely new situation for us, as far as I know.
Interesting. Is this what we did on Holly Springs Road, that we ended up with that kind of like strange strip of land within Keri?
I'm not certain. That's something I could double-check on.
Kind of re-zoned everything along the roadway so we could have development down where we do in like the southeast part of Keri?
That may be. I believe that was something that occurred maybe prior to today's annexation requirements that allow some annexation of right-of-way. Our legal staff may know more about that situation actually than I do.
Yeah, some of the laws were different back then when we were doing different things. So, if you want more details, we'd have to look into it.
We don't need to. I just think that we have some experience.
I just find it, I won't say troubling, but just odd that if anybody really believes that by connecting this and making it the town, we're going to solve a cut-through traffic problem. I don't think we will. You know, there may be some element of monitoring that we do, but I just don't want us naive enough to think this is some magic silver bullet and all of a sudden no cut-through is going to happen there.
Well, that was my question. What exactly, or what authorities might we have that we don't have if it's not under the town's jurisdiction?
So, the primary difference would be that we would be able to ensure some consistency with maintenance along all of Louis Drive. All of Louis Drive, except for this westernmost segment, is in our district. So, that would sort of be the benefit on the citizen end, give them some certainty. My understanding is, we also have some forthcoming utilities projects and things in this area that actually, if this were under our maintenance and ownership, that could help to facilitate some of that as well. So, there is sort of a town benefit to it also. Our transportation staff and NCDOT have in the past identified this specific segment as being one that is appropriate for a street swap for all of those reasons. So, the timing sort of coincidentally has worked out well, that I think this is something that would give a benefit to the citizen side. To Mr. Smith's point, it's not going to solve traffic, but to give some consistency in the maintenance, as well as help with maybe even our future infrastructure projects that need to go in this segment.
Okay. I think I would kind of agree with Mr. Smith's comments as well. And forgive me, I forgot that we had Mayor Weinberg on the phone. I don't want to ignore him, but mayor, do you have any questions or comments?
He is able to unmute himself if he does.
Okay.
So, he won't interrupt us.
Okay. I just didn't want him to think we forgot about him, even though I kind of did. Any other questions or comments? All right. This will come back to us at a future meeting. Thank you, Ms. Puckett.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see. And our next public hearing is for Item 22A14 Swift Creek Elementary School Annexation. Senior Planner Heather Wheelahan will introduce the hearing, and council will not take action on this item tonight, but it will return at a future meeting for action. Ms. Wheelahan.
Yes, good evening again. This is also a public hearing for an annexation. This is a little bit of an unusual case, though. And as you may recognize, this is Swift Creek Elementary School on Tryon Road. Swift Creek Elementary was originally built in 1930, and Wake County Public Schools has added on and renovated various parts of the building and rebuilt over the years. At this time, they are ready to completely redesign and rebuild the school. So, this annexation and the associated rezoning request, which you'll see later, will allow both school properties to access Keri water and sewer. So, in terms of the annexation, the area is contiguous to Keri's corporate limits and within the ETJ. The properties are subject to the Raleigh-Keri Annexation Agreement, and as shown on the map, the properties north of the green dash line are in Raleigh's future annexation area, and properties to the south fall in the area eligible to be annexed by Keri. And as required by this inter-local agreement, we have notified Raleigh of this petition. The associated rezoning case filed by Wake County Public Schools proposes the office and institutional conditional use zoning district with conditions to facilitate the rebuilding of Swift Creek Elementary School on the western site and additional Wake County school facilities on the eastern site. The public hearing for the rezoning has not yet been scheduled. Approval of the annexation is required before staff may approve any development plan for this site. Following the public hearing, action will be deferred to a future council meeting to allow final vote on the annexation to coincide with the final action on the associated rezoning. This concludes staff's presentation, and my understanding is that a representative or representatives from Wake County Public Schools are here tonight. So, following the applicant's comments and the public hearing, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wheelahan. And I will invite the applicant's representative to the podium.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Betty Parker, Senior Director of Real Estate Services with the Wake County Public School System. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to work. I'm sorry, I came running across the parking lot. I apologize for keeping you waiting. In working with Heather, I wanted to give you just a little bit of background that might be helpful for context on this particular project. This school is a very valuable part of the Keri community. It's been a school in this location since the '30s. The Gematorium, which is the oldest building still standing, was built in 1954 and is still in use. So, although it's not an historic structure, we are working with your historic preservation folks to document its condition, take photos, before we come for our planning and zoning board. I'm not emotional, I'm out of breath. Your agenda moved faster than I anticipated.
Nobody showed up.
It's okay. It just means I need to do more. In 1958, two additional classroom buildings were added. So, this school has grown by building as the needs have grown. In the '80s, we replaced two of the buildings with a large two-story structure that's there today. So, it's 30 years old and in dire need of replacement and upgrading to current educational standards. So, our current enrollment there is just under 400 students. The school we'd like to build is right at 500 students. So, in terms of the condition, it is in dire straits and in need of replacement. Some of the typical annexation reasons to have access to public facilities, utilities, water, sewer, and the like, we've had the benefit of that for years. The town entered an agreement with the district long ago to provide water and sewer to the Swift Creek Elementary School site. So, what this annexation does by bringing both properties formally in is not only to provide it to that site, but to the eastern assemblage we've acquired as well. As part of the Swift Creek Land Management Plan in our local agreement, we worked with all of the municipalities, including Keri, to support an amendment that allowed these two sites to be available for water and sewer and to be brought into the town's jurisdiction. So, we appreciate your support on that step. This would be the next logical step. Part of what we're planning to do in keeping with that amendment is to reroute the sewers so that 3,000 linear feet of force main that goes to the Jones Franklin Pump Station will no longer go there. It will now swing directly to Campbell Road. So, there's some improvements that our development with this renovation will accomplish in addition to upgrading the learning environment, addressing stormwater, and addressing traffic concerns. So, all of that, of course, starts with our annexation. What might be of more interest to you than the school renovation is the eastern site piece. We acquired that assemblage in 2019, and at the time, there's very little land available in a growing area, and that's where we are here. So, we originally acquired it thinking we would move Swift Creek to that site, but after doing an analysis after acquisition, we found the current site, as we had expanded it, was actually a better location. So, what we had looked for on the other site is an alternative learning program. The idea is that we have some students for whom a new program was intended, to provide services and intervention through an alternative learning program for middle school and high school education, as well as regular ed. The idea is, kids are challenged to learn in a number of different ways, but the teaching methods that work often cross those boundaries. So, we're trying to find a regional alternative learning program to assist those kids, whether it's cognitive, behavioral, emotional, to where their learning styles can be accommodated with a very efficient teaching method. So, it's a new program. Unfortunately, in our last CIP, we have so much need, we were not able to prioritize that particular program for construction at this time. So, the good news is, it gives us time to continue to refine that plan and be sure that that's what we want for the site. But regardless, it's going to be an educational program of some sort. So, that was the intended use for that eastern site, and it may come to fruition. We may be before you sooner than we think, but for now, we just have more need than we have capital improvement dollars. And of course, market volatility, inflation has really curbed some of our opportunities, as it has across the board. I think that's most of what we wanted to share with you on the background conditioning plan. In addition to the improvements to sewer, part of the Swift Creek Land Management Plan in our local agreement also addressed stormwater requirements. So, we are applying more stringent stormwater requirements and measures to our design as outlined in that plan. So, our intention is to come into the town and do a great job in upholding all the town's expectations. So, we have a clear need for the additional seats, for the improvement in the educational facility, and for the opportunity to provide some of these more specialized instructions to our more unique populations in the area. With that, I apologize for being late, out of breath, and probably talking too much. I'm happy to address any questions you may have. Thank you for your time.
No problem at all, nothing to apologize for. We appreciate seeing you, Ms. Parker.
Great. Thank you so much.
All right. Anything else before I open the public hearing? Okay, thank you. At this point, I will open the public hearing and call on the clerk to read any written comments and call on any registered speakers.
No written comments, no registered speakers.
At this point, I will call on anyone who might be in attendance who would love to say something about this, to come to the podium. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions or comments. And just remember, we're talking about the annexation right now, not a rezoning or development plan.
So, will we see the rezoning next, or will that come back and see them together?
You will see the rezoning next.
Okay. Never mind.
Anything else?
Nope.
All right. Well, this item will return to us at a future meeting. Thanks, Ms. Wheelahan. All right. Our last public hearing of the All right, our last public hearing of the evening is for item 5.6, Acts 28, Land Development Ordinance Amendments pertaining to Signs. Planning Manager Katie Dry will introduce the item. Council will not take action on these amendments tonight, but it will be referred to our planning and zoning board. The item will return to us at a future meeting for action. Ms. Dry.
Hello, good evening again. For your consideration, our Act 28 amendments to the Land Development Ordinance. These amendments fall into the incremental change supporting major plan initiative category as well as the process improvement and technical clarifications category. All items are within Chapter 9 of the Land Development Ordinance, which regulates signs. Cary staff issues nearly 300 sign permits per year and handles hundreds more signed inquiries from contractors and businesses. Cary Sign Ordinance is designed to promote assigned owners' needs while balancing the aesthetic and interest of the community and regulating the adverse effects of signs. Act 28 proposes amendments to Cary Sign Ordinance in two areas. Item A is amendments to regulating signage for mixed-use buildings, and item B is process improvements and clarifications to the existing sign ordinance. The Imagine Cary Plan maintains and enhances core qualities that make Cary an attractive and inviting community while also providing strategic opportunities for developments where residents can live, work, and play within environments. Cary's vision establishes that higher density and mixed-use developments will be located within destination centers, commercial mixed-use centers, and Cary's Town Center is designated in the Cary, in the Future Growth Framework Map within the Cary Community Plan. Examples of recent mixed-use developments include Fenton, Meridian, and the One Walker One Walnut Development downtown. Cary's Sign Ordinance requires an update to its standards to permit signage for mixed-use buildings. In this example, Cary's regulations allow building signage based on the linear frontage of a building or a tenant's space. So the size of this sign is established based on the length of the linear frontage. This approach for regulating signs works well for single-story developments, but presents a challenge when applying regulations to upper stories of vertically mixed-use buildings. In this example to the right, ground-floor tenants would be permitted to have signs, however, upper-floor tenants would not. The proposed changes for vertically mixed-use buildings would allow one-wall sign per facade along upper-level floors in addition to those already permitted for the ground-floor tenant's signage. The sign criteria will follow the same process for ground-floor tenants where we measure along the linear frontage of the building. A second component of this amendment is to increase the allowable size and location for projecting signs. These are also called blade signs sometimes. Cary's current regulations allow for projecting signs under certain criteria. For example, projecting signs in the Town Center are allowed along pedestrian walkways with a maximum size of six square feet, as seen in this example. The proposed amendments would also allow for mixed-use buildings to have larger projecting signs up to 45 square feet, as seen in some of the examples to the right. The second part of Act 28 amendments found in item B are classified as process improvements and technical clarifications. The intent of this section is to clarify certain sections of the ordinance which have been either difficult to understand or enforce and also to align with our current practice. This includes streamlining paperwork requirements for logos and trademarks, standardizing criteria for vehicle-oriented directional signs within commercial and office developments, clarifying size allowance for veranda signs, and criteria for window signs. Item B also includes two amendments for ground signs and monument signs. First is to clarify the calculation requirements in the Town Center. Our current regulations allow a maximum sign area of 32 square feet for all ground signs. In the Town Center, the maximum is also 32 square feet, with the caveat that any sign over 16 square feet must then reduce their wall sign area by the corresponding amount. We have found that coupling these allotments together is difficult to track and enforce as tenants can change over time. We also want to note that as item moves forward, we are going to continue to study ways to preserve the intent of this ordinance while looking for solutions for managing changing tenant needs. And we will include the findings of further study of this language in the staff report as the case continues to the planning and zoning board. Item B also includes language to streamline the process for approving monument signs. The current ordinance requires that a development plan is required for verifying the location of a monument sign. And staff has found that the location verification for a monument sign can be accomplished not only through a development plan, but also through using a survey or a plat. So this would open up additional options. We do want to note that all other sign criteria will remain in effect for monument signs, meaning that staff will continue to review the height, materials, font, color, lighting, landscaping, as well as other items as currently required in the Land Development Ordinance. This concludes the presentation. Following the public hearing, I'm available to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this point, I will open the public hearing and...
No written comments?
I would invite anybody that would like to speak on this item to approach the podium. It's great to be Cary. All right, at this point, I will close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions or comments. Looking at you.
Okay.
I was checking to make sure.
She answered mine, I'm good.
Okay, yeah, so I talked with Scott Berry and Ms. Dry this week because I had some concerns about items three and four under item B. And I think that my concerns are laid, but I'll tell you what they were. For number three, which was the, if you have a ground sign and a wall sign, and before that allotment was tied together, I was concerned that we would then have bigger signs. I just want to make sure that we didn't have any unintended consequences of taking away that correlation, that people came in and now they have a big sign here and a big sign here, you know, that kind of thing. And then my concern with number four, with the monument signs, had to do with, are we still checking what they look like? And I have total confidence, and that little bullet point at the bottom there gives me ultra-confidence, that we weren't like, you know, giving it away, like, oh, sure, do anything you want for your monument sign, you know? So I feel, I feel comfortable.
Good, good. Any other questions or comments? Actually, I thought there'd be discussion on this one.
Would you like to discuss something?
No! All right, well, thank you very much, and the next step is for this to go to the planning and zoning board for their review and give us their recommendation, and it will turn, return to council for consideration at a later date.
Thank you.
All right, we move to discussion items. Our first and only discussion item is the Cary Apex Water Treatment Facility Maintenance Facility with Rooftop Solar. Item WT1315 bid award, and Utilities Director Jamie Rebels will present this item, and council may take action. Mr. Rebels.
All right, good evening, council. For your consideration is a bid award for a new maintenance building with rooftop solar at the Cary Apex Water Treatment Facility. This project provides another great example of how we are advancing Cary's environmental goals by incorporating rooftop solar with new construction. So the Cary Apex Water Treatment Facility has been in operation since 1993 and provides high-quality drinking water to approximately 280,000 citizens in Cary, Apex, Morrisville, Wake RTP, and the RDU Airport. The facility has expanded multiple times over the years from its initial rating of 12 million gallons per day in 1993, when the plant opened, up to its current size and permitted capacity of 56 million gallons per day. In 2021, the Cary Apex Water Treatment Facility treated and distributed 8.2 million gallons of drinking water, or approximately 22.5 million gallons per day for our water service area. And that would be 8.2 billion gallons of drinking water. As we've heard in many recent headlines, aging infrastructure, especially related to water systems, is a major challenge for water utilities across the nation. In Cary, safe and reliable water service is supported by an extensive water utility maintenance program. The Cary Apex Water Treatment Facility Maintenance Complex serves as a base of operations for our maintenance staff. This is where our maintenance services are operated and managed for the water treatment facility itself, including our ozone generators and our chemical feed facilities, as well as several remote sites, including the raw water pump station and intake facility at Jordan Lake, as well as Cary's eight elevated water storage tanks, the ground storage tank at Old Apex Road, and our interconnections with neighboring utilities. The proposed maintenance facility includes a project that is going to provide a new maintenance building and continues our focus on maintenance and preservation of our water system infrastructure for future generations. High-quality and professional maintenance programs are essential for ensuring water system resiliency, infrastructure performance, and maintaining high-quality drinking water. We are proud to report that our water, our award-winning water treatment facilities remain focused on these fundamental aspects of effective utility management and that our utility fund invests in long-term maintenance and improvement of our critical water system infrastructure. In fact, over 80% of our water utility capital plan is now dedicated to maintenance of existing infrastructure. The proposed facility expands our maintenance complex by providing a new 4,500-square-foot building that combines with our existing 4,600-square-foot facility. The new facility is designed as a flexible workspace to support a wide range of maintenance operations, as well as providing space for parts inventory management and equipment storage space. In following Cary's values to support environmental protection and invest in clean and renewable energy, the facility has also been designed to accommodate rooftop solar as part of initial construction. The rooftop solar design for this maintenance building includes 87 rooftop panels with an anticipated annual production of approximately 57,000 kilowatt-hours of renewable energy production. The solar panels are expected to provide sufficient power to supply all electrical needs for the maintenance building, or approximately enough for four to seven homes, depending upon weather and overall solar production. This translates into a payback period of six to nine years. The carbon offset for this solar facility is roughly equivalent to the carbon sequestered by 48 acres of forest in one year. We originally bid the project on July 21, and two of the four bids were considered non-responsive. We rebid the job on August 18 and received two bids. Salisbury &amp; Moore Construction was determined to be the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. Staff recommends rejecting bids from July 21 and awarding the base bid received on August 18 to Salisbury &amp; Moore Construction for $1,484,400. Upon council approval, staff will execute contracts, and construction is anticipated to begin later this year and last approximately 18 months. This concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rebels. Do council members have questions or comments?
I'm curious, what, what is the timeline once you start? What, when do you see this coming online?
About 18 months, about a year and a half. And it might be a little bit shorter, but with the materials and trying to get steel now, that kind of thing, that's why we're thinking 18 months.
And will the electricity being provided by the solar be used in-house, or, yeah, so it'll be all used on-site?
It'll all be used on-site, and we believe that we're going to produce more electricity than this maintenance building's actually going to use. And so the remainder, the balance of the power produced, will be used on-site at the Cary Apex Water Treatment Facility.
Okay, so you're not sending it back to Duke for free?
No, no.
Good.
We've got plenty of uses for the power at the water plant.
That's great.
Can you clarify that you are not going to be, it's not a net metering situation? There's onsite storage, battery?
Well, no, we have, we have a lot of other electrical demands, even within the adjacent maintenance building, the 4,600-square-foot building. So whatever power is not used by the new maintenance building, it'll just carry over and get used elsewhere.
So it's not, it's not stored?
It's not.
It's consumed at production?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just curious, what's, what's the additional cost comparing the solar rooftop with, versus the traditional rooftop? Like, what's, what additional cost it is to install solar?
It's about $90,000. And the payback period is about six to nine years.
That's good to know, and I'm really excited about this effort. I would love to see more town facilities to have the solar infrastructure. So appreciate the staff efforts in this.
That's a great point. You know, there's the 30% that homeowners get if they, 30% reduction on their federal taxes. Does the municipality get any of that? Do we also get to use that?
Part of the payback period includes, the calculation includes $24,000 in credits that we would receive from Duke Energy.
Great, that's awesome.
And then we're also tracking some additional possibilities through the Inflation Reduction Act that may help cover some of our construction, which was not covered in the payback period calculation.
Jamie, with all the federal grants that are coming down, are there any that are going to municipalities for the construction of renewable energy projects?
Well, the one that we're tracking right now is the Inflation Reduction Act, and that was just signed, I think, in August. So that's one that we're going to watch very carefully and see what opportunities are available for us there. The good thing about this project, it's shovel-ready, it's ready to go. So, so that's something that we and our consultants are going to watch very carefully, and since we're right out of the gate on this one, you know, if there's any opportunities, we'll be able to take advantage of them.
Just curious, was cost factor as far as not having battery storage and stuff on-site? I'm just, you know, thinking, okay, cloudy, stormy days, y'all need to do maintenance stuff at night, you know?
Yeah, there's, there's just so much demand for power on the water treatment facility site that, you know, any power that we produce beyond what the maintenance facility requires, it gets used up instantly, so...
Right, but what if the maintenance facility needs power and it's nighttime, or it's storm?
Yeah, so, and we've got, we've got plenty of other power feeds at the facility to make up the difference there.
And was that factored into the calculations for the ORI? Maybe, I mean, I see six to nine years, so I kind of figure that...
Yeah. Well, the, there was no battery storage or anything like that calculated in. If we had added battery storage, that would have made the payback period longer.
Okay, what's the lifespan on the panels?
They're about 30 years.
Oh, wow.
That's, that's what we're seeing. Even the ones at South Cary that we just, we've just purchased, you know, those are about 30 years. They were really high-quality when they went in. These will be real, you know, high-quality, brand-new panels, and the industry standard right now that we're seeing is about 30 years design life.
It looks like it's a 400 or 435 kilowatt per panel. Looks like you guys have the, of course, I had to do the math. So you have quite a bit, because for my house, I have 36 panels. And it does, you know, on a cloudy day, about 96% of my electricity usage, so it should do pretty well for, for that.
Yeah, and I would add too, this is a, this is a really great learning experience for us because this is a brand-new facility. We're, we're bringing in the rooftop solar from the initial construction, so we can make sure the roof is designed just right to be able to accommodate the rooftop panels.
No trees to block.
Make sure there's no warranty issues. We can make sure all the power feeds are, you know, designed just, you know, just the way they need to be. So, you know, this is a really golden opportunity with it being a brand-new construction site.
It'd be great to see a case study on this, as you guys do this, to see what lessons learned we have and what it would look like to retrofit other areas as it goes on. I'm really excited.
Also, just to be clear, this was inspired by the council. So without the council's conversations of the last year, I can assure you, we would have been building an asphalt roof. So, I mean, I think that's important, and it's, you lead us to, so...
Okay, any plans to retrofit the existing maintenance facility building?
We've, we've looked into that in the past, and I think this is one of those cases where we'll, we'll see how it goes with the new ones.
See how it goes.
And one of the things that we've been concerned about with some of our plant facilities is if we go back and retrofit, we would impact the warranty of the current roof structures. And so I think the, the maintenance building at the water plant is about 20 years old, so it's, it's probably old enough that we could go back and retrofit it at some point. Another factor to consider is the way the new building is laid out. It's got the best southern exposure to get the most solar. The, the current maintenance building is not aligned that way, so it may not be as, you know, it may not be as... know, it may not be as productive to put solar panels on that one.
Okay, I was just curious. They seem about the same size, so...
Yes, sir. That's something that as we, as we get some more experience with it and see some of these panels go in on our roofs, and just make sure it all works right, we don't have leaks in the roof and that kind of thing, you know, just because when you retrofit an older building, there's, there's more things to consider in that regard. And so we just want to make sure we maintain the structural integrity of the building. And so as we get some experience, we'll certainly, we'll certainly come back and consider all options.
Okay.
Fire stations might be a good place to look into.
We're going to put them everywhere we can.
Yeah. Excellent.
And nowhere we shouldn't. For none.
Any other comments or questions?
I think we fixed the...
This is...
Oh.
Oh, my gosh, he's there.
Yeah, we tried several different technical approaches, and ended on WebEx. I just wanted to know that, you to know that I'm here, and I think this is fascinating, and I do look forward to having future projects with solar. So, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor. All right, well, no further comments or questions. I would be happy to entertain a motion. A motion to approve?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Rebels.
Thank you, council.
All right. Any closed session, no closed session? All right, as there is no additional business before us tonight, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.